The Wilson County Commissioners Court, February 10th, 2025. We're going to call this meeting to order. And for the minutes of the record, we have a full court quorum. Before we begin, we're going to have a prayer by Assistant Pastor Frank Whitthease from Lodi Fellowship, Poresville. Is he not here? I guess he didn't come. All right. Commissioner Martin, would you lead us in prayers?
You bow your heads and pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today, where we come before you to conduct the business of Wilson County. Father, we just ask that you guide us and direct us in to do things in your will. And Lord, we know there are many that are out there that are sick, and many out there that have lost family members, many others that are dealing with a crisis today. And Lord, we just ask that you reach out your healing hand and touch them and let you know that you were there with them as you are always. And Father, we just ask that you bless these proceedings in your name. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
My pleasure to see the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item number three, public comments. Do we have anybody signed?
Yeah.
All right. We have Mr. Manuel Ust... How would you say that, sir?
Utsi.
Utsi? Mr. Utsi? You got the floor, sir.
Yes, good morning. My concern is my road, which is 334. And most of it's already been done on the north end, which they've done a good job on. But we have lived there eight years, and this road is ongoing. And we have spent, I don't know how much money, on tires, front ends. It's in bad shape right now that you go down there, you're going to rattle like this because it's so bad. And the only reason I'm here today is because of that. I mean, I haven't complained about the roads in eight years. And now, to me, enough is enough. When is it going to get done? Half of it's done, half of it's still getting demolished, getting tore up. It's not even getting touched with a blade. I mean, come on. We've had dry weather, so you can't use rain as an excuse, but it is in bad shape. I have talked to the commissioner numerous of times. He was working on 334, and then switches to 332, and then comes back. But, you know, I do this all my life. I miss work just to come here to talk to y'all today about... I'm sure I'm not the only one. I'm sure there's other county roads that's getting beat up. But this one is really getting bad, and it's like certain people only have certain privileges that they get more than other people get. Now, when you come up to my gate, and you stop at my gate, and that's it? The rest of it's done, except for my gate going south? That just shows me it's about me. It's not about the road. I have six grandkids right there on the road. I told him, hey, you need to do something about the dust. So he comes and sprays his oil. Now, I don't know about y'all. But to me, all oil costs money, and if you don't finish it while the oil is down, it's just going to get tore up, you're going to have to spend more money to do it again. So that's my concern, my road. But, you know, there's other roads around me, like Precinct 4 Commissioner. He's done a great job. All the roads around me are done. I just keep bringing up the question of 334. And there's a lot of traffic that goes through there because of the shortcut coming from Saguine going to Laverne. And that's all I have.
Item number four, we have certificates of completion, awards, and bond continuating. Certificate for Henry Whitman, security, privacy, general role, Sejus. Genevieve Martinez, certificate attendance for the 70th VSS Annual Conference. Genevieve Martinez, certificate of birth, registrar certification course. Same course for Gail Ritchie. Same one for Crystal Hidalgo. Mary Spoon. Georgina Lita. Liliana Lopez. Jennifer Fleming. We have Ms. Christina Moots, Treasurer, continuing education for her treasurer's compliance. Again, for Christina Moots, County Investment Academy completion. And the last one for Ms. Moots for Public Funds Investment Act. Enter those into the record. Item number five, we have our extension activity reports. And I don't think there's anybody here from AgriLife, so you'll just look those over for a few moments. Commissioners, we'll move to item number six in a minute. Item number six, we have Ms. Christina Moots, County Treasurer. We're going to have, I guess, a meeting at 10:00 a.m. Okay, so we will pass in item number six until 10 o'clock to have that hearing. Move to item number seven. We have Mr. Glenn Mabe of the Coffee and Cars and Veterans Club discuss and take action on request for permission to use the courthouse lawn and rear parking lot for their annual car show to be held on 1st November, and to present VSO with a donation from last year's annual car show. Mabe, you have the floor, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you? And Judge? Wanted to do a couple things today. One is to thank you for last year allowing us to use the courthouse area for the car show. If you didn't get an update, we had bad weather to start with, but we still had 80 cars there. And I know the judge was there, and everybody was having a blast. Everybody was just having a great time. And I heard a lot of people say, hey, it was the right move to move it from Richardson's to downtown. The venue was great. So we would like to request to use the courthouse lawn and back parking lot again this year on 1 November, as the judge said, to hold our annual car show. One of the things with that car show is monies that we raise, we always donate to local veterans organizations, and one of them is to the county VSO, Ray Herrera. And that is so that he has basically a petty cash fund that he doesn't have to come out of his pocket to pay for certain items that maybe the county doesn't cover, or wait for the county to reimburse him, because it's not fair to him and his wife and children to do so, we feel. So that's pretty much what we're here for, and we would like to have your permission to use the courthouse area again this year. Thank you. We'll get the vote first.
All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on item number seven.
I'll make a motion to let Mr. Mabe use the courthouse lawn, rear parking lot for their annual car show on 1 November, 2025.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Paradola. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Mabe, it was good. I attended it last year. It was very well put together.
Thank you.
Sure it'll be better this year.
Always gets better.
Any other discussion? Not call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes.
Well, we need to be able to accept the money. So I'll make the motion to allow the Coffee Cars and Veterans Car Club to present the VSO with a donation.
Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Paradola. Is there any other discussion regarding the acceptance of the funds, VSO? Here none, a call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. Take pictures. Oh, there she is. You can't cash this one, but it looks good.
I bet you use it more than once, too, don't you?
Oh, yeah. We're not crazy. We are, but...
We thank you, Chief. We do. We thank you a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number eight, we have our County Commissioner Theresa Nettles discussion and possible action to contract with LexisNexis for legal software and to approve a budget amendment to increase fund 9,500 law library expenses by $4,080.
Good morning. I was seeking to contract with LexisNexis. As of right now, we do not have a research software for our legal abilities, so this will help us immensely with templates, other items that we would need in the county attorney's office. This was being used previously by the previous county attorney. However, we just didn't extend the contract. I believe Brenda has that. I've negotiated with them significantly to try and reduce the price, and so as of right now, a one-year... It's for a three-year contract, three users, and so as of right now, it'd be $4,080 for this year. The money does come from the law library fund.
So just for some backstory, this was a contract that, like Ms. Nettles said, that the county had had previously, year over year. It expired in November, and at the time, the former county attorney opted not to renew it, not knowing if Ms. Nettles was going to utilize it. So I did not budget for that. So the request would be, there is money in the law library fund, so there would have to be a budget amendment. What I didn't put on there is the expense and the revenue. So I would pull the dollar amount that she's requesting, the $4,080, to do a transfer from the fund balance as revenue, and then add the line in the expense as well.
Okay, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for this budget amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with LexisNexis and to approve a budget amendment to increase the law library expense by $4,080 with the revenue coming from the general fund?
No, from the law library.
From the law library fund.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Have any other discussion regarding item number eight?
It's going to be for three years?
Yes.
$4,080 per year?
It increases every year by almost about $200. So the second year is $4,284, and then the third year is $4,500. And it's mainly because they're using new technology at this point. They're integrating the AI and all of that other items now.
Three-year contract, paid annually?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Here none, a call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. Thank you.
Item number nine, we have Ms. Lou Sarato, permitting and development director. We'll go to 9A, naming of private lane in Precinct 3, Jonathan's Way, review and sign.
Yes, good morning. I do have our address coordinator here to speak about this private lane that was requested from Diamondback AC. This is in Precinct 3, and did you receive the information on it?
Yes.
Okay. Did you guys have any questions on the private lane? Along with the submittal of the private lane, they're also turning in a private road agreement to be filed.
Are you requiring us to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for 9A.
I'll make a motion that we accept the naming of the private lane, Jonathan's Way, off of County Road 347.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Paradola, seconded by Commissioner King. Have any other discussion on 9A?
I've got a question. Does this road really need a name, or do they just want it?
I believe they're going to have several suites that are going to be...
In that building?
Yeah, that'll be off of that road. So for addressing purposes, it needed its own name.
All for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. Item 9B, utility permits. One, permit 789, Southern Springs Water, Precinct 4, County Road 401, review and approve.
Yes, this is a utility permit submitted by SS Water Supply for a two-inch PVC casing boring under Road 401, County Road 401. And this was given to Commissioner Aiken so that he could check it out prior to...
I'm going to go ahead with it.
I'll entertain a motion.
All right. Make a motion that we accept permit 789 from SS Water Supply for a boring under County Road 401.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Paradola. We have any other discussion or further discussion on 9B, one? Here none, a call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, eyes have it, motion passes. Item number 10. I don't know, is Judge Terry here? Just as their piece monthly report, but I don't see one in here, so we're going to bypass that. Item number 11, our County Sheriff, Jim Stewart, Sheriff's Office Progress Report. All right, sir. Genevieve Martinez, County Clerk, item number 12, discuss and take action on Commissioners' Court Minutes. Now, this is the one we had a discrepancy on, an amount, correct? Do we need to clarify on that?
Yes.
So it would have been on the 13th. What's... Give me the numbers on... Put in the wrong place. Okay. Okay. All right, I'll put it back. Did you sign it? That's good enough. That's duplicated it. Okay. All right. Okay, so we need, as we approve the minutes of the 13th, item number 20, so let's go Where it says, regular county bills in the amount of $714,948.79 presented by Brenda Trevino, County Auditor, on a motion by Commissioner King and seconded by Commissioner Aiken. It was voted unanimously to approve paying the regular county bills as presented. My understanding, we were off by some on that, on the number? Why are we voting on this?
I didn't know there was a change in the minutes.
What was the change? That's what I need to know.
During... During the...
Okay, I see where it's at. All right, so there was a motion made at $709,564.23. In actuality, it's $714,000, correct? So we need to... I need to entertain a motion to correct this for the minutes?
So what was the $5,000 discrepancy? Just a mistake in the motion?
Oh, it was the invoice. I know what it was now. I didn't realize that this was... Because I don't see the minutes, so I don't know. But it was the invoice for gem materials. We had pulled it out, waiting for a review by the county attorney's office for payment.
And that's back in now, Ms. Nettles?
It had already been paid, yes.
Okay, so the truth...
But at the time that it was turned in, we had to mark through taking that out because it was after court.
Okay. So for clarification, the $709,000 is not the one we need to be voting on, the $714,000 approval, $948.79.
Yes, that's what you had already approved. You had approved the $714,000. We paid the $709,000 at the time.
Okay, so I'm confused.
I believe the minutes have the $709,000.
The minutes have $709,000.
The minutes have $714,000.
The actual amount is $709,000.
They only paid $709,000. They didn't pay the $714,000.
It's my understanding the minutes are correct, because that's actually what was done. You need to actually change, correct the amount that was being paid.
Correct.
The minutes reflected what happened, so you need to just make the correction that the payment reflects...
Well, but do we? Because that was what was turned in and paid, the $709,000, but then within probably three or four days, we turned around and paid that invoice, which equates to the $714,000.
So it was still paid on those bills?
We still paid the total dollar amount of $714,000. It's just the amount that was paid that Monday was $709,000.
The minutes that we're voting on read correctly for what action was taken. It might not have been the same day. It was taken...
Exactly. It may not have been that exact same day, but it...
These are correct, so there's no need.
So if you're not correcting the actual amount, can you just clarify that that's kind of what happened?
That is correct.
We've already approved that $714,000.
Yes.
Okay.
Ultimately, that's what happened.
Yes. And the reason the clerks brought it up is because I had marked through the $714,000 and put $709,000 on the page that you guys all signed, because that was actually what was being paid that day.
Okay, so having said that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Paradola, seconded by Commissioner King. We have any other discussion on item number 12? Here none, a call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number 13, we have Ms. Jaylen Botterford, Human Resource Specialist, presentation of payroll and personnel changes.
Good morning. Patrick Reynolds was hired as a patrol deputy for the Sheriff's Department, making $25.33 per hour or $55,326.32 annually, effective February 3rd. Jeff Doogie resigned from his position as an investigator for the Sheriff's Department, effective January 21st. And Carl Marasek is resigning from his position as an investigator for the Sheriff's Department, effective February 28th.
More questions? Ms. Botterford? Okay, the time is 9:24. We're going to recess until 10 o'clock, and we'll be... Sorry, I'm sorry. Didn't do the bill. I'm sorry, guys. I'm sorry.
Were you in a hurry to get to jury duty, or what?
I want to go back to jury duty.
Judge, would you... She gave me a five already.
Will you sign it? Did you sign it, sir?
We're going to sign duplicates, because I have one already. It's the same permit that came from Mrs. Sarato. Mrs. Trevino, on the general fund, what is 461, Chapter 19, February Statement? I don't know that I've recalled seeing that.
Chapter 19 is a line item that we have in the budget. It's for the Elections Office, so Ms. Botter, our Elections Administrator, receives any expense that she has that she can code to Chapter 19 through statute. She turns around and gets reimbursed for it from the state, and so we keep it as a separate line item like that. So if you see something like that that says February Statement, that means she used her county credit card to purchase it, and we've got the backup in my office for that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And if you want to stop by, Amanda can give you the detail on what that $1,300 was for.
I just didn't recognize the Chapter 19.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, but she can request reimbursement up to a certain dollar amount, so most of that is at no county expense.
Commissioner Padola, that blue works, it's on mine. I'll turn it back to you. I think that's your Dodge. Did you get your Dodge serviced the other day?
In Laverne, I think.
Okay.
It went to you?
Yeah.
We need to move one step.
Amanda's got the info. Amanda has it.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I told her about it a while ago.
Oh, okay, good.
So do we need to change something, or it already got...
They'll take care of it. Yes, just letting you know.
Because you do have a Dodge, but not that old.
Not that one.
Thank you for catching that. Of course, I guess it went on your bills, and I didn't see it, because I don't see the bills that come in from the blue place in Laverne. They go directly to the auditor's office. go directly to the auditor's office. I told them that I don't have Steve whatever. Have one, Chris. Yep.
All right, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to accept the bill.
Make a motion to pay the county bills for $342,549.53.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Paradola. Is there any other discussion on agenda item number 14? Hear none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? The bills are accepted. Now, we're gonna recess till 10 o'clock. It's a week reconvene for a hearing. The time is 9:31.